I would like to call to order the July 5th, 2022 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners Work Session. Welcome, everyone. I hope you all had a great 4th of July holiday and it's good to see everybody here tonight. First on our agenda is the approval of the work session agenda. You all have a copy of that before you. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda, including the changes on page three? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say ah. All opposed, no. That motion passes and we move to discussion items. First up from Cooperative Extension, Youth Commissioner, Youth Summit.
All those things.
Informational items, yes. Welcome. We're glad to have Tracy Lacamp and she will introduce to Makai.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. This is Makai Nash and it's part of the partnership between North Carolina 4-H and the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. We invite youth from each one of the counties to be part of the upcoming annual meeting. And they, the North Carolina 4-Hers have homework that they are to do before they get there. And one of those things is to come and meet with you all and to introduce themselves and have a little bit of the spotlight and learn a little bit about what you all do as well as speak in front of you. And we have the privilege of having Makai, who's actually one of our county Youth Commissioners, and has been an active member for this past year. And so Makai actually knows that role a little bit with you guys and is really excited about what's coming up with you. But he will be joining you all as the Cabarrus County Representative for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners for the Youth Summit. So you'll see him at your breakfast as well. And so I'm going to turn it over to Makai to talk a little bit about all of those things.
Good afternoon. I am Makai Nash and I am here to talk about the great opportunity of Youth Commission and Youth Voice. So first I will start off talking about Youth Commission last year. I came a little bit later in the year, but I came during the school supply drive, which was a very unique drive because we sent boxes to all of the high schools, middle schools, and libraries in Cabarrus County. And I did a lot with helping to deliver boxes and picking up boxes. And I really enjoyed doing that because when you deliver box, you ask them. But going back to pick up the boxes and seeing the school supplies in the boxes is really nice to see how our community works together to get stuff done that we want to get done. And then also after filling the boxes with school supply drives, seeing how the principals and assistant principals appreciated the school supplies that we helped get and gather was very rewarding. So some of the opportunities that we have during the summer is about to come up is 4-H Congress where we go vote on the 4-H leaders. But we also have Citizenship Focus, Summer Camp, which is junior leaders, and Team Retreats, which is great opportunities to develop leadership skills and help out in our community. What I'm looking forward to most this year of Youth Commission is opportunities that we did not get to do last year, like gun violence prevention and Citizenship Focus with the schools where you partner with teachers who teach civics classes and you learn more about county government. As a Youth Commissioner, I also have the privilege of attending this year's Youth Voice Summit as part of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. Since Cabarrus County is hosting, I am also looking forward to learning more about the behind the scenes and hosting of large conferences each that we have in Cabarrus County, 4-Hers' local government and the role it plays in all of our lives. The NCACC sponsors this free trip for two teams from each county. I look forward to participating and learning more about local government. 4-H teams can participate in many leadership and civic opportunities throughout the year like this one. The concept of the Cabarrus County Youth Commission actually started with a group of civically minded 4-H teams and NC 4-H Citizenship Focus, another team development program. 4-H allows these youth to come back to their community and make a lasting impact in their community. Dr. Martin Luther said, "If I can't fly, then run. If I can't run, then walk. If I can't walk, then crawl." But whatever you do, you have to keep moving forward. Everyone has a perfect purpose. Some people have big purposes and they fly. Some people have smaller purposes and they crawl. But whatever we do, we have to find our purpose as a 4-Her, as a Youth Commissioner, even if I don't know what my purpose is yet. I can help develop my purpose by being actively engaged in my community and developing greater leadership skills. Thank you and I hope everyone, this will influence people to sign up and apply for Youth Commission.
Thank you.
So like Makai said, we are currently accepting applications for the Youth Commissioners. And we definitely want to say thank you for supporting our budget, for supporting the Youth Commission again, and as well as supporting the teens being able to take part in the trips. Part of Cooperative Extension's budget allows for the Youth Commissioners to take part in the North Carolina 4-H Leadership Trips with scholarship money that you all help support. So thank you very much for that. And Makai is going to go to North Carolina 4-H Congress and then he'll come back and then he'll see you all at your annual meeting as well.
We're always excited to see the youth involved in the Youth Voices at the Association Convention. Makai is getting a little bit shortchanged because he doesn't get to travel anywhere because it will be here in Cabarrus County, which we think is a good thing.
I did. I wanted to just say that Makai is also, he's getting around other places anyway because he is a member of the inaugural class at the Cabarrus County Leadership and Career Institute and has been to four programs of that with three remaining. And this is catching you off guard, but I think you can do it. Tell us a little bit about your experience with that and if you feel like it's benefiting you in any way.
My experience with that has been very interesting because even different aspects of going to the hospital. I've never seen myself somebody working in the medical field, but even venturing out and seeing the different PowerPoint posters that they presented us made you think about, I don't want to be a pharmacist, but to break down and then look at the different opportunities that they have and a pharmacy, it almost changed my mind to see, oh, I might actually want to go into the medical field. And to go to RCC and the research campus to see the opportunities that we have right here in this county and even in Connersville, being a small town as this is, it was a great opportunity. And coming here and learning about the Sheriff's Department, being able to shoot a taser, which was really cool and seeing the EMT for resuscitating people and even putting that little tube down their throat, which was cool to do two times. And so I've had fun and a great learning opportunity doing the Youth Leadership Institute.
I have to comment on the Career and Leadership Institute, which I think Commissioner Honeycutt and I both have attended all four of those sessions, but it has just been absolutely incredible, the response that we have gotten back from the participants. And I mean, they just exceeded our expectations as far as their engagement and involvement and the questions that they ask. And I know that Youth Commission was one of the topics that was discussed and I heard several class members asking, you know, how do we sign up? And I think we've gotten that information to them. So we very much appreciate you being a part of that program and we have been so impressed so far. And thank you very much for being with us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we move now to update on the building adjacent to the county parking garage and that construction. And Kyle Billifer will talk with us about that one.
This is the update on the Novi Flats project, which is the one-sided wrap adjacent to our county parking deck, the most recent parking deck that we built there on the corner of Spring and Corbin. Wanted to give you a couple milestones of what they're going with. If you recall, all the easements and agreements we've brought up to you in the past, there's a significant amount of them, whether it's for their secondary power, which is their generator power, which they've already cut the slab to put that in, but also for them fencing off certain areas as they did their facade and built their building. So if you've been back there, you've seen that their building now is taller than ours. So today we shut down the entire fifth floor of the parking deck. So that'll be fenced linked off so that no one can access it because of the fear of something falling, specifically not just in the parking spaces, but if you realize how that, kind of the stairwell case goes up in the driveway, that would be right into the traffic, vehicular traffic. So they've closed that off and that and the rest of the areas that are already fenced off, they're looking to keep those fenced off to March of 2023. So I did talk to Kaufman Lynn, who is the contractor for that project, and they've provided me some milestones and I thought I would provide them to the board. They'll be topping out the structure, which they just accomplished that literally like three days ago, so that's as tall as it's going to go. They'll starting on their drywall in October. They'll have their permanent power set up in December. And then their startup of their HVAC and kind of getting everything fumed in for their finishes will be February. And then their substantial completion date again is in March. So once they have all of that up, we can open up that fifth floor and those other areas along the parking deck. And we've been dealing with them on signage and everything. The only incident we did have is during the storm, which was on the 16th, part of their actual structure came down on our parking deck. And there was no damage to our parking deck and we shut it down and carted everything off of there. We actually had to bring up pieces of equipment, break it down and bring it all the way down the deck. So we used flaggers to do that. But there was a significant amount of their wooden structure that ended up on ours. That's all I have is an update, but I'm willing to bring any questions back to them. And that just shows you the pictures of the structure that fell on the deck.
Having parked in that parking deck a number of times since then, each time or since that project started, I verbally complained to myself about all the parking spaces that were closed and wasn't sure if that was really necessary or not, but seeing these pictures makes me understand that it definitely was necessary. I'm surprised that it's going to be, that the entire fifth floor will be closed until March, which is going to be, you know, with some of the, like the tree lighting event in downtown Concord, when the parking lot up here is closed for fireworks and, you know, that is going to be quite an imposition. I'm just curious why, when they do interior finishes like sheet rock and so forth, why would that?
Also their exterior, putting all their units, all their HVAC and everything that's going to be on the roof and how they're going to get that up there and what could come down. Really, it's when we first looked at it, it was if the parking deck was oriented in a different way, meaning if your drive was on the other side, we would have only had to shut down half of that floor. It is, the reason we did it is the vehicular drive that goes through there. Because you can see what flew through there and I can tell you, there was other debris that made it farther out, just not the large walls like that. So safety sake, we really, they did not want to indemnify that and take on all that liability.
And of course, we've known that this was eventually going to happen since we first started talking about this parking deck that was part of the plan.
Well, that's probably a perfect example of why we did it. We will continue to work with them. I update them and they update me probably once every 60 days. So if anything does change, if they're able to button up the building and open it up faster. When they came with me with March, I did ask them, I said, hey, you reached out with your partner, the city of Concord, because it's a bulk of their events that utilize the parking. And they said they've already spoken to Concord about this.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I can't see if my mic's on or not. Kyle, do you have any kind of a timeline as to when the new tenants will be over? You're saying mostly finished in March. And at what time have we had any discussions about putting meters up for people coming in to fee for parking? Has the county staff discussed that at any point, any time? How, the tenants, are they going to have to rent spots from the city or is that all included in their rent or how?
The agreement that the Board of Commissioners signed is that they'll only have to pay if we start charging everybody that's there.
Right.
So, no, there's been no discussion.
And we hadn't had discussions for that. I know we put the hardware in and/or the infrastructure in for that, but I just wondered, you know?
There's conduit from floor to floor, but there's not a true, real system to go along with that, not to account the way they want to. We do have, we do have a reputable provider of that equipment that put in some of their equipment, the kind of the basis for it, the brains for it, but not all the bells and whistles, no. So the thought process was to see what the capacity is like after this and also knowing that the streetscaping project is going to force more cars off of the street and into this parking deck. So at that point, we'll probably start to see what our, I guess, our capacity is and at what time to start to make those decisions.
Yeah, well, I've had several people over the last six or eight months ask me, you know, well, when is the county or city going to start charging to park there? It's good that I have to park now, you know, I mean, pay to park now, but at some point, and we knew this going into it, there would be a pay for park. And I didn't really know how to answer it. I just said we hadn't had those discussions and let it lay at that.
We did a significant investigation of a bunch of city and county parking decks in the area about three years ago, right after we built it. Michael Miller and I went around to a lot of these different locations and kind of, you know, took pictures of their signs of what they charge and things like that. But they all have agreements with users who use them every day that that's not on the sign. So though, I would imagine that if we start seeing the capacity met, that the county manager would authorize us to probably hire a consultant to come in and do, where they sit there all day and do some counts to get your different times and then put in a structure for us. And then it would be up to the IM and ITS group to figure out how to actually charge people and put all those lift arm gates. And then obviously you've got to, you know, you've got to give vouchers for all your jurors. So there's a domino effect of all of that.
Oh, sure. It's a lot more than this pay to park. It's a lot more, I realize that.
Yeah.
There's more maintenance.
Yeah. The only, the only place that we ever looked at that provides, has a true division that does this was Wake County. They have literally a division under somebody like me that does nothing but handle all their parking decks, both the maintenance, the billing, the whole nine yards. And it's a pretty convoluted system once you get on that road. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, then we'll move to the next item, which is yours as well, Kyle.
Yes, thank you, sir. We can go to the pictures. Oh, you're fine. So I'll give a couple milestones. This is the update on the EMS headquarters. I'm sure you all drive past it enough to see some ideas. And the next week or two, we'll actually be having our first major concrete pour. That'll probably change the, kind of the look of the overall site. But I'll go over the milestones from the last 60 days as well as what our upcoming milestones are. Structural steel has been completed with the exception of the vehicle bay area. We're just waiting on some more of the CMU walls to go up for that. The electrical sight lighting and conduits are nearly complete. Actually, as of this past weekend, they were complete. The electrical underground work in the concrete slab has commenced. The plumbing underground work in the concrete slab has commenced. Dumpster pad footing has been poured and the grading of the parking lot as well as the stone continues. The upcoming milestones are the electrical and plumbing underground work in the concrete slab phase one. That's the Cabarrus Avenue end of the project. The electrical and plumbing underground work in the concrete slab phase two, which is south of the vehicle bay. The concrete subcontractor will start pouring phase one in mid-July. So coming up, they're actually a little bit ahead. And then the exterior framing will commence once the concrete is poured for phase one. So as you start to see more concrete go in, then you'll actually see, start to see the framing going up. So we're right now as kind of an OAC group, we're looking through the, you know, mock-up walls and picking colors and making sure all the tiles are exactly the way we want them. To be honest with you, from the intent of design, from the interior finishes to the exterior finishes, we've only had to make one or two very subtle changes because of materials where I will compare that to the courthouse, which I will tell you, we've had to make about 50% of changes just because of whether it be places that make brick, places that make stone, places that make tile, going out of business or consolidating and no longer carrying that aggregate that gets you that exact color. We have not run into that for the EMS headquarters, so that's been nice. What we showed on the original color boards is, I would say, 90% of what's going in there, both outside and inside. These aerials that kind of show you, so the roof portion closest to us, that's coming down Union Cemetery, that's kind of the staff-only area. So that's where all your lockers and your decon and all the area. And then the gap in between is where the vehicle bay is. And then obviously, the front portion going through Cabarrus Avenue is where all your training and fitness room and office suites and things like that are. And that's just the opposite view. Can you scroll back up a couple pictures? Yeah, so that's your vehicle bay, right there. So again, the phase one of this project, just to remind everybody, is just to put in the three rigs. And obviously, there's a phase two design. Why we designed the building we did is to encompass, to go with a whole centralized where we could move the entire fleet and get out of our different EMS stations that are throughout the county. And that just shows you your stub up. So that's all of your underground plumbing right there is in and then the pad will go over that. And that's them still hammering rock. That same piece of equipment with a different attachment was out there on day one when they started and I think that they'll be out there for another month or two, still hammering away at rock. And mostly at this point, it's all of our stormwater things that they're hammering away. That's all I've got, unless you have any direct questions.
Questions for Kyle.
Very exciting. Thanks for the update.
Sir.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we move now to 3.4 Innovation and Technology Report and we're happy to have Todd Shanley for that item.
Let me share. Thank you. I'm coming today to just kind of review some initiatives that we've worked on over the last year, or the last couple of years, actually. So the book club, the Super Cab Co. and the Fail Forward projects that were started by Debbie Brannon. And we're looking at different ways to push some new life back into those. You'll remember that Debbie would come and talk about the different books at the beginning of each innovation report. And we did 32 books since 2019 that cover topics of leadership, change management, and innovation. Lauren and I have been talking about how to rework that and to bring some new life to it. So what we have proposed is we're going to bring a poll to the staff and let them use a list of books that Lauren has gathered from the ELGL. And if you guys aren't familiar, that's the Engaging Local Government Leaders Group here in North Carolina that has a lot of information that we feel like there's some good opportunities there. And Tiffany Powell from Communications and Outreach has also reached out to help us with that program. We're also going to engage some guest moderators depending on the topic. So they'll be, we hope to gather some topics that are government-related. So if there's people who are experts or subject matter experts in those fields, we'll ask them to chime in and so it's not all falling on an individual and keep that going. And if you remember, the kind of the goal behind starting that book club was to teach people or engage them in teams. Microsoft Teams, we all use it today, but in 2019, nobody really had a need or a use for it. But then we had a pandemic and everybody has become experts at it. So the need was a little less there, but we are currently working on our new Intranet and we feel like this might be a good way to drive some traffic to the Intranet. And I put a note there that the HR, Communications and Outreach, Lauren, Ellie on the strategic planning side, John Bradley and Risk and the ITS team are just a few of the people who are working on that new Intranet to try to engage all of the things that employees touch on a regular basis that have that one-touch area. So we'll be pulling a lot of that together. Super Cab Co.'s, we haven't really talked about that in a little while, so going all the way back to January, we usually do those quarterly, but I missed last quarter. So we're going to do it a half a year. So we've had 794 Super Cab Co.'s. And in January, we retuned it and the committee came together and came up with some new categories or titles for things. Captain Marvel, there were 246 of those. The Green Lantern, 161, and Hawkeye, 385 of those. And then we kind of go into a little detail on, you know, the Captain Marvel provides leadership that goes above and beyond to help others to do their best. And I grabbed a couple quotes, you know, from that group. I read most of those, 795, this morning and it was, if you're having a bad day, we've got to figure out a way to put those out there for you because if you're having a bad day and you think that government's not doing the right thing, this will really encourage you. I think the quotes that you see there and the ones that you'll see coming up, the employees really appreciate either their leaders or their coworkers a lot. Because I think the, as you can see, she's a true team player and works very hard to ensure all the tasks are complete. And it was just, you know, the last one there, there was an overwhelming sense of thank you, dot, dot, dot. They were just enumerated on and on and on that, just don't, I can't do it justice here, but there were just a lot of, a lot of people who are very grateful for their coworkers and their leaders. Because I know that Mr. Downs received one from someone and I saw that and it was just, and most of the leaders in this room, I think, have received one from their subordinates. And I think that's another way to really recognize other folks that we don't do enough. The Green Lantern uses creative, dynamic, and strategic powers to shine light on innovative solutions. Again, you can see there, really appreciate your efforts to persevere and find solutions for changing situations, stepping up and to help, to be proactive. Those are just things that folks are really reaching out to their coworkers and trying to make sure they feel appreciated. And then finally, Hawkeye, an expert tactician who always has an eye out for opportunities to proactively help others. Went the extra mile to save us a lot of time and legwork, more appreciated than he knows. Helped a client on short notice, was helpful, professional, and cheerful. Thank you for your expertise. And then this last one, it just, you know, there were several like this, but I grabbed it. I tried to sanitize the names out because the last thing I wanted to do was embarrass an employee and then keep people from doing these. I think that was the other, the other hard part of doing that. I think, you know, people put their names in there or what have you and I don't want to, I think this is a great way to recognize people, but I don't want them to stop doing it because they feel like they might get called out. But helped an elderly woman who wandered into the courthouse. He was able to get information that helped contact a family member to come and pick her up. He was kind and considerate. Obviously, that was probably a courthouse security person that helped with that. But just that note that a supervisor or a staff member saw that and took the time to mention that, and I think that's the thing that I'm proud of with the Super Cab Co. program is it gives us that vehicle to recognize people to be able to do that. And then Lauren and I recently talked about trying to find a way to work that into our new Intranet as well, so that whether it's a sanitized version or, you know, I shouldn't say sanitized, but the anonymized version of that, to be able to get some of these more comments out there to encourage employees to do more and to know that they're appreciated. Finally, the Fail Forward program. If you remember, last year we started a program with the Center for Public Impact. This July 14th is the final masterclass that all of you and all the department heads are invited to attend. So if you've received those emails, I'll be sending out a reminder one later this week to sign up. And the last topic is the cultivating a fail-forward ecosystem. And those last, those other three bullets are the previous three. And there's recordings of those if you are interested and reach out. Over the next couple of months, it's my intent to bring some of our folks that who have gone through the deep dive on the fail-forward to tell you what they've learned in those processes. So Mr. Thrift with the Tax Office, Ms. Sifford with Planning and Building. So Mr. Thrift with the Tax Office, Ms. Sifford with Planning and Buildings Sections, and Ms. Calhoun with DHS are, are going to come over the next couple of months and just tell you about what they've learned from the Fail Forward Program on that deep dive. So I look forward to, to those deeper conversations and really the, the innovations and the process improvements that we've, we've gained out of those. And I think that's all I've got for you today.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Any questions for Todd?
Does everybody remember the programs, the Super Cab Co. Those are peer-to-peer that sees somebody do something for each other or for the public. And then the Fail Forward, uh, you graciously agreed to the funding for that. That's a national program that we participate in. And it's, uh, it's to help us think outside the box and, and not only think outside of it, but don't be afraid to think outside of the box because that's where some of the best ideas are. Uh, but if you're worried about failing and getting, you know, slapped on the wrist all the time, then, then you're, you're not as willing to express those good ideas. And that's what this whole class has been. And some of our departments have really taken a hold of that and, and moved forward with those skills as well. So it's good.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We move to now to item 3.5, uh, from legal quasi judicial procedures. And I'll turn the floor over to County Attorney Rich Cook for that discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This board is going to have an opportunity for the first time to conduct a quasi judicial hearing, uh, at your July 18th meeting. You may have seen it on the, on the schedule for July 18th. It's listed as an appeal of an order to take corrective action. Uh, it's under G. So you're going to be doing that at that meeting. And it'll be the first time this board, I believe, has done that. And certainly, I can't remember any in recent memory. And, um, so we wanted to kind of give you an overview of, of the procedures for that. And as part of that, we can't even talk about the case. You can only talk about it in the hearing. So I won't even mention anything about it. Um, and, um, so we'll kind of go through that now if you'd like to. You basically, um, for quasi judicial hearings, those are handled by our Board of Adjustment, which is part of our planning and zoning board. They do all of those on, say, variances, interpretations of the ordinance and matter, and matters like that. They handle them. So that's why you, you don't usually see them. But under this procedure involving this particular type of, of appeal, it actually will be a, a hearing and a trial level hearing where you'll take evidence. So you'll be doing that. And I'll explain to you exactly how you go about it. Cause it has to be done in a certain way. Cause there are constitutional issues involved with these and, and, um, and other issues. I say where we can't even talk about it outside of the hearing. So, um, by way of background, that's what that is. So, um, when it comes to quasi judicial matters, when you think of quasi judicial, always think about court. Cause the judicial part is talking about a court type matter. As, um, and it's the way court cases are handled in terms of procedure. So quasi judicial essentially means like court. Um, so if you look at the matter in that way, you, you'll have the proper mindset for how to, to approach it. Now, in a quasi judicial proceeding, you as the, as the Board of Commissioners, acting together, will be the deciding board. You will have to adjudicate how the law applies, the general law applies to the particular situation in this case that you'll hear. Together you are the, are the judges of that case. Um, you will not have a robe or a wig like they do in England, but you will serve the same function and conduct yourselves in the hearing in the same way as a regular judge in a court case at, at the trial level. Your decision must be based on evidence and standards. So you will use your judgment in drawing your conclusions. You must also follow the rules in order to protect the constitutional due process rights of the parties involved. These kind of ordinances, um, and particularly land use ordinances and these corrective ordinances that we're talking about here, um, have standards for different types of situations and for making the decision regarding, regarding them. A quasi judicial hearing is the process by which the standards are applied to the specific property that, that's involved and the specific facts that you would hear. Um, you can have testimonial evidence, which is evidence from witnesses, and also documentary evidence, which is documents that might be introduced into the hearing. Um, and you'll receive all that evidence during, during the hearing and not outside of the hearing. And you will need to decide whether that evidence meets the standard that, that you apply in that case involving the ordinance involved. As I mentioned before, the conduct of the hearing must respect the constitutional due process rights of the parties. Parties must be provided proper notice of the standards in the ordinance and of the hearing itself. At the hearing, the parties have the rights to present evidence, cross-examine witnesses, and provide rebuttal evidence. Board members must be impartial, um, decision makers. Um, there is also a right of appeal from your decision. Uh, the parties can also have attorneys represent them if they need it. Now prior to the hearing, you will receive a little bit of information, probably from staff that gives you, uh, some documents that will be part of the staff file. So you will get that before the hearing starts. You can review those in advance, but, um, in order to have a little background on the case. But you cannot discuss them or anything about them, um, outside of the hearing, either with your fellow commissioners, um, or anyone else. So once you get that packet or whatever you get for this case, you, you can, I say, you can look at it, but you can't discuss it among yourself until you get into the hearing. If you have a legal question, you can either get in touch with David or me about those, and we can answer the question, but we can't give you advice on how to decide the matter. That's something you'll have to do yourself. A judge must make his or her decision based on the evidence provided in the hearing. You should also have no contact with any of the parties in the case. If you do inadvertently have some contact, you need to announce that at the beginning of the hearing and that it has not affected your judgment in the case, that you haven't made up your mind in One of the due process rights of the parties is the right to have the matter adjudicated by an impartial decision maker. A board member who is biased or has a conflict of interest must not participate. Now, in these situations, bias is, um, means that the board member has a fixed opinion prior to, to the hearing that is not susceptible, not accept susceptible to change. So you can't make up your mind in advance. You have to actually hear it and then make up your mind. A conflict of interest under the law exists when the member has a close familial, business or other associational interest with an affected person or a financial interest in the outcome of that matter. Again, undisclosed ex parte communications with one of the parties can also be a due process violation. So we just have to be very careful about that. The Chair of the Board will serve as the, as the presiding judge, uh, over the evidentiary hearing. But again, all, all of you are considered judges for this and you decide together. Now, the Chair will conduct the hearing in the same fashion as he conducts his public hearings, um, in, in your meetings, except that these, this, these hearings generally follow a court procedure of one party presenting their evidence with cross-exam of those witnesses as each witness testifies. Then the other party doing the same and then rebuttal by each party. What you typically see in a hearing or a, a trial that you would, um, maybe have seen on, in, in person or on TV. So that's the way those are conducted. Um, typically, um, a county, county staff will present a report at the beginning, but that's not always the case in these situations. Um, and that report is also subject to cross-exam. Again, I can't talk specifically about this, this matter. I can just tell you in general, the way these matters are held, are handled. If there are objections to either testimonial or documentary evidence being admitted, those objections are decided either by the Chair of, or by the full commission, either of whom can ask for assistance from county legal staff.
You told me you didn't want to be a judge.
That's right. All witnesses in a quasi judicial proceeding must be sworn. Uh, that can be done either by the Chair or by the clerk. Unlike in a criminal case, the Board does not have to determine the facts beyond a reasonable doubt. Instead, in a quasi judicial matter of this type, the Board's findings of fact must be supported by competent material and substantial evidence. Now, I'm going to define those for you. Evidence is competent if it's sufficiently trustworthy and reliable for consideration by the Board. Evidence is material if it shows that one of the standards to be applied will or not, will or will not be met. Evidence is substantial if it's relevant and something a reasonable person, uh, would consider to be sufficient to support a conclusion. Overall, there must be substantial evidence in the record to support your decision, or it could be overturned on appeal. Generally, the evidence must conform to the North Carolina Rules of Evidence, except that the standard for admission of hearsay evidence is somewhat relaxed. I say, I said earlier, when it gets down to evidentiary matters, you know, you, you can rely on me to help you through those, that part. When making a decision in a quasi judicial case, the Board must do two things. The first, it must determine the facts of the case based on all the evidence you've heard. Um, but you review the evidence and resolve competing evidence and then, uh, decide the facts based on what you've heard. The second thing the Board does is it must apply the relevant standards from the ordinance by determining whether there is sufficient evidence in the record to determine whether each standard has been met. You could, your deliberations must be in public. It cannot be done in private. And you make your decision by a majority vote. Decision will then be put in writing by county staff after your decision has been made. That's pretty much the way those things are handled. Anybody have any questions? We'll go over this again. We'll go over this again before the 18th, you know, on the 18th, just so it's fresher in your mind.
I do have a couple of questions, but I'm not sure you'll be able to answer them at this time, but I will ask them anyway. Um, so who decides the witnesses?
And the parties.
And the parties are?
Well, I can't.
The party you can't tell me.
Yep.
And the county.
Well, the county will be involved in this one, yes.
So that's considered the two parties? Okay.
Well, there could be, um, other people, um, involved who live in the area around the property that's involved in this. So it's not, the parties are actually, it would be, um, the county, uh, or some county staff and, and, and the property owner, um, or the person that's on the property. But then because it does involve, uh, that type of a situation, there are other people who live in the area may have an interest in, in the outcome of that matter are allowed to put on evidence. Um, they can't, they're not allowed to cross-examine or to have, have some of the other, um, constitutional rights as the parties do, but they can participate.
And can they just show up and do that? Or do they have to sign up ahead of time? Or how does that work?
Well, they will get notice. We have to give notice to everyone that would, that would possibly have an interest in it. And that will be done by, by staff. That'll be taken care of like it usually is. And so then, you know, they have to show up for the hearing. They can't, um, they can't just put documents like a petition into evidence. They can't do that. They have to actually show up and present their documents. And documents have to be relevant. And, um, I suppose that you could possibly have expert witnesses in a case like this. Possibly. Of course, we don't know, you know, what's going to be presented exactly at this point. But it could get a little bit involved in terms of the evidence.
Thank you.
I will be representing the, the staff. So Rich will, the way we do these in the Board of Adjustment is, Rich is your attorney. It will help the Board Chair and the committee, uh, the Commissioners work through the, the process and legal issues. Um, I'll be representing the staff and putting on evidence from the staff to represent their position. Uh, there is Zell's representation of that, hopefully.
So what has changed in the world that we are doing this when we have not done it in the past?
Well, I'm gonna pitch that one to David. He knows more about that.
So it really comes down to is, I think I, I can tell you the nature of, it's already in the agenda. I'll tell you the nature of the action is, what's being appealed is a condemnation of a building for unsafe conditions. That, uh, the person, the building owner has, was, uh, the building was inspected. The staff found it to be unsafe for a number of reasons and, um, held a hearing, uh, here and issued an order to correct the conditions of the property. And that, they're now appealing that position, uh, that order. This is an authority, we don't usually get to this situation. Um, usually there's, we have a lot of tools to handle these situations. Um, the staff are, do an admirable job, both the zoning and building standards to, um, to come up with a compromise, a compliance program, something. Uh, this is not one of those situations. So it's a, it's a, we've also have a very intricate system that, which the Board has enacted ordinances that delegates many of these procedures to the Board of Adjustment, to the Planning Board. Uh, we even have a special, um, we actually have a local act that, that allows the Planning Commission to make certain quasi judicial decisions that would normally have to be confirmed by you, uh, by you, the Commissioners. So that's really why it's so rare is, is we've, we've, we have a very, we have a great infrastructure for our Board of Adjustment to handle these matters. But the nature of the statute, how it's set up right now requires it to be heard by the governing board.
So that, David, just for clarification, that, it used to be that any appeals from the Board of Adjustment went to spirit court, straight to the courts. There was a revision to the statutes?
No. So that, that's still the case for zoning matters.
Okay.
So this is, so we do, we do these exact procedures that we're talking about with the Board of Adjustment on a very regular basis. Um, that's what they do. They're trained on, they're very familiar with these processes. Um, and it's because we have a zoning ordinance that delegates that decision-making authority to them. We do not have a similar ordinance for, for unsafe buildings. Uh, there's some processes we could, but we don't. Um, this is a very rare authority to be used. Um, because of that, it, it, um, by the nature of the statute, how the statute's set up, it defaults to the governing board, which is you. Um, there'll be plenty of discussions going forward about, you know, whether there's adjustments to be had here. But we don't, I mean, this is going to be a very rare occurrence if, if I have anything to say about it. Uh, but it is my, it is my fault that this is coming to you too. So, um, I, I can't go into too much more detail beyond that. Um, but, um, you know, this is a very unique situation. And you'll be presented with a very specific question of essentially, under the law, is this an unsafe building? And if it is, what are the appropriate corrective measures? And we'll have a staff recommendation. I'll provide, you know, competent evidence to that fact. And the building owner, um, who is represented by an attorney will be able to present, um, you know, be able to question the staff. And we will present, um, other information in support of that. And, um, we, you know, talks are ongoing. We may be able to resolve this before it gets here. But by the procedure now, once, after this meeting, we'll be sending notices to the owner of the hearing. The, um, there'll be a signed place at the property. And there will also be, the notices that have to go to the adjacent property owners.
Is this something, this quasi judicial, is this something that we will resolve that evening?
You, that will be at your, that will be completely at your discretion. Um, I have every intention in keeping this very focused. Um, so I, from a factual standpoint, this is not a, you know, we're going to keep this focused. And, um, usually how this works is you'll make a decision, um, on the matter. Um, and depending on the circumstances, that may, we may need to go back. the circumstances, that may, we may need to go back and write an order to that effect, and then come back and have it voted on and confirmed, or we may be able to, you know, we may, we may have an order ready to go to that effect as well, that will be voted on the spot. But in the end, you'll have to, ultimately, you'll have to issue findings of fact and conclusions of law in writing.
Typically, are these long, drawn-out functions, or is it something that we're looking at?
No, no, so.
An hour, two hours, what are we looking at?
It's, this, I promise you.
Yeah, don't promise.
Okay, I promise. My case will be focused in a matter of, I mean, usually, usually, there'll be, you'll have rules and procedure that'll be approved, and you'll say, okay, each side gets 30 minutes, and that would probably be about right. I don't think it's a complicated issue, but, you know, that's, we're going to have a hearing, so, that's why we're, you know, that's why we're here for.
Well, it's not that I'm pressed for time or anything like that. We're going to get where we're going fast enough anyway.
Yeah.
My only thing is, I just sort of like to plan ahead, say, you know, this is going to be a long one, this is going to be a short one, that kind of thing.
I will say is, I will say is this will, if we do, I mean, Rich, if we do this for an hour, I'd be surprised. I mean.
Well.
Depends on how many witnesses show up.
Yeah, and I think, you know, we know there may be some neighbors.
Yeah.
You know, so, you know, it's hard to say, but I don't think that's too far off.
Yeah.
I would pretty much agree with that.
And, you know, you have a lot of discretion, either the chair and the board will have a lot of discretion. If it's getting late, someone's got somewhere to go, we can always adjourn and come back to it. If you're not ready to make a decision, we can come back to it. There's a lot of flexibility in that way.
Well, and as David pointed out, at the Board of Adjustment, they usually adopt some rules to sort of put time limits on people to try to get them to focus their evidence. And so, we might, could look at that for this one, the same thing, which would, usually helps to keep it shorter, and people make a decision as to whether they really want to testify or put on evidence that may not really be that relevant, so.
So, whatever they choose to do, it will be televised, just like our normal meetings?
So, it will be a public hearing?
Yeah.
You know, so, if it, you know, there's no, it's not required to be televised, but it will be.
Yeah, but we traditionally televise all of our meetings.
Yes.
Okay.
So, it'll be entirely an open, there won't be any, you can't, you'll have deliberations in open meeting as well. So, that is, be unique in that way. It's not like the jury where you go back in the, you know, in the back of the room.
Okay, additional questions for Rich or David? All right, thank you very much for that explanation. And we will move now to discussion items for action. First up is item 4.1 from Active Living in Parks Fiscal Year 23 Matching Incentive Grant Request. We are delighted to have Byron Hagler with us to talk about that item.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. As Commissioner Morris mentioned, this is for the Matching Incentive Grant Program, and I believe you all are familiar, but is providing seed money for recreational opportunities throughout the county, and there's many stipulations into how those funds are utilized. What I am coming before you with are three applications that we have received, and those three are all being recommended from the Active Living in Parks Commission to be fully funded. Those three are listed as Weddington Hills PTO. They are requesting funds for a playground, updating their walking track behind the school, if you're familiar with that project. Lador Baron is one that we will never forget, is, they are wanting to continue her legacy and do some upgrades and some additions to that walking trail in the back. They are requesting $2,000 to be matched. You also have Harrisburg Community and Youth Association requesting a batting cage for Stallings Park. Then you have Concord High School Athletic Booster Club, they are requesting scoreboard upgrades to their facility. So, by the priority level, you have two of the highest priority level, being Weddington Hills PTO and Harrisburg Community and Youth Association, by adding new or improvement of recreational opportunities that are provided. Then you have Concord High School Athletic Booster Club coming in at a moderate priority level because it is support facility, so that's why that comes in at a lower priority ranking for that. Our total request for, from the applicants is $28,553. Available matching incentive grant funds for this fiscal year is $50,000. So, if approved by the board, we would be looking at $21,447 remaining for a second round of applications that we will receive in October. Can I answer any questions or go into any more detail about those applications? And I, sorry, there is a note on here that the Concord High School Athletic Booster Club is pending timeframe, so they have a full stadium upgrade, outfit going on at that facility, or they are resurfacing the track, and so if their timing does not work out properly to have this installed and on-site at the time that they are resurfacing the track, they will resend their application because it will need to go through our purchasing timeline with the grant restrictions for that to go into place. But timing works out well, then they would greatly appreciate the funds for their project.
Questions for Byron?
No, not a question, but we've all seen and heard these many times over, and this is a terrific program, but for somebody who's either new or hasn't heard about it, and is just now saying, hey, how do these people get, where did, tell them how to go about applying and the process and whatnot.
Sure. So, this is, this is a program that was started back in 1974. It's a, it's a great program of providing seed money for new recreational opportunities, and the stipulations that are there has to be located on county property or leased to the county for 15 years. The organization has to be a not-for-profit organization, and so it could be through the school system, it could be through an athletic association, many different groups that could come in for, looking to create recreational opportunities, and they can do so by either calling Ian Sweeney, he is the new project and event manager, and he is over the matching incentive grant program, and so he can call, he can be called directly there, or we can have, also, you can look for the application online on the Cabarrus County Active Living in Parks website. You can review the entire list of rules and regulations as to what is, what works for this, this program, and what doesn't count for this program, or just give us a call and we'll be happy to walk you through that. But the last time, and I'll bring those figures to you, we are looking at over $7 million in projects since '74, where the county's portion is less than half of that to create those recreational opportunities in the county. So, it's just, it's a great way to give action and give a push in that direction to create these, these opportunities throughout the county. Very welcome.
Okay. Anything else? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item is 4.2, Appointments to Boards and Committees. You all have a copy of those in your agenda. Transportation Advisory Board, Library Board of Trustees, Early Childhood Task Force Advisory Board, and those all come with recommendations from those groups. Does anybody have any comments or questions about any of those? Okay, if not, we will move to item 4.3, Central Island Regional Council Request to Ratify Amended Central Island Charter. And I know that that is a board that Commissioner Schu represents us on. Did you have comments about that item?
Just real briefly, whenever the Central Island Council of Government, which we are a member of and have been for a number of years, discovered that we are considered an essential government service company, and we found out that there are tax benefits to that, so we had to update our charter. And the charter needs to be ratified by all of the member communities, and it's a non-member community. And we do have a resolution here, and, Mr. Chairman, I can read this resolution today, or we can do it whenever we, of course, it's going to be on the consent agenda. I don't think we're going to vote on this tonight, I don't think, I don't have that part in front of me. But if the chair would like, I can read that resolution.
I think your explanations probably did a good job of explaining what that's about.
Right, it's a real simple thing, all we're doing is ratifying it as a member of the Central Island Council of Regional Governments.
Excellent, thank you. Questions, commissioners? Okay, hearing none, we will move to item 4.4, Voting Delegate Designation for North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, 115th Annual Conference, as well as Legislative Goals Conference. And of course, you are all familiar with this action that we take each year to appoint a voting delegate at the annual convention, and then, of course, the Legislative Goals process, that meeting is in November, I believe.
Yes, 15, 17.
Yeah, so, so we can, we can, we can take that action now and certainly have time to make adjustments if we need to. So, do anybody have any comments, or anyone would like to volunteer for that role? I will say that I plan to attend both, and if it is, the board desires, would be happy to fulfill that function.
I plan on attending also, Mr. Chairman, and if I need to, I will be more than glad to be that voting delegate. I've done it in the past, it's not like it's a major deal, but then again, we do need representation, and if the board wants me to, I will, whichever.
How about I do one and you do one? How's that work? You take Legislative Goals Conference, and I'll take the other one. So, we have consensus on that? Is that sufficient, Lauren, to give you what you need? Okay. Okay, next up is item 4.5, Rental Increase for the Cabarrus County Human Services Center Building in Kannapolis. We're happy to have Raj Kachiri with us for that item.
Now, this item is for a request for a budget amendment to increase our budget related to the rental increase of the Cabarrus County Human Services Center Building. There's not been an increase since June of 2012. Based on our agreement, the increase will adjust the annual base rent by the percent increase of the CPI from June 2012 to May 31st, 2022. That increase amounted to 27.37%. So, that amounts to about $196,443 increase in the rent annually for the FY '23 year. We did not include this in our FY '23 budget because we did not receive that calculation until after the budget was finalized. So, what we're asking for is a budget amendment to increase the rental budget by $196,443 from contingency funds. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have on that.
I do have, Raj, just a couple of questions, and the county manager may have to chime in on this. We just renewed that lease year, last year or year before last, is that, I think it's a five-year lease, is that correct?
I believe, in 2020 is when it was renewed or amended.
And it was for five years, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, 2025 will be when?
Well, we amended it, and the increase, from this increase, I think it'll go on until 2027, May of 2027.
What I'm trying to find out is how long do we have the building for? Because, you know, we've got plans with, hopefully, breaking some things down.
I think it's 2020, I think there's four more years left, does that sound right?
Yeah, it's through 2027, and you'll see it on the capital improvement plan as a future project in either 2024 or 2026, to try to get out ahead of that and have a building ready so that we can vacate the lease.
Right, exactly. I'm just hoping that we'll be able to do some of the things that we've talked about, you know, with that building, and, well, not at that building, but the services that we provide will go in, maybe in a different direction, make it more centralized.
Yeah, some of them, we're already programming the milestone building, so some will go in that direction, and then we're also now looking at a new, at a potential, some several potential sites for a new building that we could build to house some of those other employees that will be remaining, and then potentially even the historic, or the current courthouse may, may be another option too.
Right, well, that'll be a good thing, because there's not a lot we can do with this, I mean.
Yeah, and we're trying to move it.
There's not a lot we can do.
That's per contract, and we're trying to move the services back to the center of the county. So, so whether it's downtown, or whether it's out near the Triangle area, or in those particular areas. Our options are limited without building brand-new buildings, but so we're looking at several different sites now, and that, well, that's not tonight, right? That's next, next month, we'll be discussing the sites. So, we've got some sites for you to consider. We've, Kyle has engaged our real estate folks to search out some potential sites, and we're evaluating them now for a potential new building.
I certainly agree that it's very troublesome to me to have that kind of $200,000 increase. We're talking about a million dollars in five years. Of course, we don't have quite five years left, but, I mean, the building has served well. How long, how long's the county been in that building? 2008? I'm guessing.
Something like 2006 in the contract.
Yeah, I was going to say.
2006, yeah. Yeah, the one thing that, and of course, all this was written in the contract, but if you take that, the sheet that was included with our information that has the Consumer Price Index on it from the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics and all the other details, and you applied that same formula to, and we're talking about from 2012, if you applied that same formula to our tax rate, our tax rate today would be 89 and a half cent. So, that, that increase is getting applied to our expenses, but it's not getting applied to our income. And of course, we've worked really hard to keep that tax rate as low as possible, and through growth and some other things, we've been able to do that. But I thought that was a pretty interesting comparison. It sort of indicates to me that we have done, we have reached, achieved our goal of keeping that tax rate as low as we could while still meeting the needs of all these different areas.
One of the good things is, I don't know how you guys are, but I think that we try to need to be in control of our destiny, and when you are having to pay such an enormous amount for a building, that this goes on and on and on, at the end, you don't have nothing. But if we can, in years past, we fiscally was not in a position to build our own building, but because of the things that has taken place in the last few years, it's got our revenue stream where that we can do things like this, and you just do it one time. You don't build, just like we refer to the courthouse, you don't do that every 10 years. Hopefully, 75 years out, do another one maybe, but we, none of us will be here then, but, and then, of course, as DHS, you build it one time, and then you don't have those ongoing lease payments and all of that, but you got maintenance, but, you know, still yet, though, it's better to own it than it is to lease it. So, I'm glad we're moving in that direction.
Yeah, back then.
I appreciate all the effort of the staff, you know, to say to it that we can accomplish that.
Yeah, we, if everybody remembers the human services or social services at the time, it was actually over there, right there where we're building the ambulance station, or the ambulance facility, training facility. So, yeah, that was, that's where it was, and it was a very small building, it wasn't large at all. So, we had to do something quickly, and at the time, the, our customers are the ones that needed those services, were more heavily located in the northern part of the county, and that's why we went north. and just happened to have that old Kmart shell available. But I can tell you, it's, it's, it's an old Kmart. And we've done well with it, but it's not been ideal for, for the employees. But it has, it has, it's, it's lived its life. It's time to get them something more modern, and our customers as well.
I would say I'm not overly happy with it either, but if we made it since 2012 with no increase in the rents, there's something to be said for that too, so.
Very true. Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll move to item 4.6, Donate Law Enforcement Vehicles to the Town of Midland, and Rodney Harris will talk about that item.
So this agenda item would donate vehicles, and due to time constraints, we are asking you to suspend the rules and vote on this tonight. The existing law enforcement contracts call for the vehicles to be donated to the towns, so for Midland, Mount Pleasant, and Harrisburg, at the end of their useful life. So that's how the agreement was entered into in 2019, and that agreement runs through 2023, June 30th. What this would do is just accelerate the transition of those assets to the town. So instead of waiting four years, we would transfer them now, and that will allow the town to get insurance at a $500 deductible level that the county is unable to acquire. And so that's what this item would do, and they will insure them through the North Carolina League of Municipalities. If you approve this item, the title transfer would occur on Thursday, and the town has already cut the check and would bring that at the time of transferring the title.
And one, you're saying cutting the check, but you're also saying donating at the same time, so.
So the, the check would reimburse the county for the cost of the vehicles.
Which is what they would have done anyway.
Correct.
Right.
Yes, they pay for the vehicles that are related to providing service in their town limits.
Rodney, can you explain just a little bit why, why, why it's not that we can't afford to get the $500 deductible? It's because we're self-insured and that we, we expose, we take the risk, but we take it because it's a large volume of vehicles that we can spread that risk out.
Yeah, so Mike did a good job of explaining it. So the county's loss history, the deductible or the premium we would pay to insure at that level, if we could even get it, would be more than what we typically lose on a annual basis. So it's just not economical to, it's better to pay for the loss of a vehicle than to pay for the additional premium of that level of coverage. Now, we monitor our loss history. There may be a time, could be two years, could be five years, 10 years, where our loss history exceeds that premium, and then certainly, we would consider changing and adding that type of insurance.
Questions, Commissioners?
So now, right now, it's in the counties. It's dated to the county, correct?
These are titled to the county, correct?
Yeah, titled.
And we purchase them with county money.
Okay, so I'm fine with this, but based on, you know, some past things, I'm going to make sure that we do have the check before the title is transferred.
Just one quick question, Rodney. Do we have any timeframe as to when those contracts will be renegotiated?
That is a terrific question. So we are currently negotiating with the town of Harrisburg, and they would like a longer-term commitment for them, so they want a five-year agreement with a five-year extension. And so, once we get through those negotiations at a staff level, we would bring that to you for final approval. The hope is we could use that as the template for the new agreements for Midland and Mount Pleasant, which we would trigger that in December. We would send a letter saying we want to reopen those negotiations with a new contract effective July 1st, 2023.
But the vehicular part, though, will be the same as it is now. The useful life donates to those municipalities.
The current Harrisburg draft is slightly different. So the goal of the county in all of this, and Chief Bailey's over there, and he could speak to this better, was standardization is what's important. They want to make sure every vehicle is equipped the same. Administratively, it's easier, rather than going through a reimbursement process, to have the towns purchase the vehicles directly. So we have a provision in there, in this proposed new contract, that would simply require them to get approval from the sheriff prior to making the purchase. But it would get us out of that process. They would own the vehicle, and they would title the vehicle themselves.
Thank you.
So how has this been handled in the past, and how is it being handled in other municipalities? What is unique about this situation?
This is the first new vehicles purchased under these new agreements. So I'm not familiar with other, how other counties or towns do this, and how we've done it in the past, and Chief could speak about that. But under the existing contract that was entered into in 2019, this is the first vehicles that have been purchased.
Yeah, when the, when the contract was extended and amended in 2020, it was negotiated that the county would title the vehicles to the county, with the town purchasing the vehicle, just to keep standardization the same. What we have found out through some litigation and some insurance issues, that it's better for the town to have the vehicle titled to them after they purchase the vehicle through the contract, if that makes any sense at all. So beforehand, they were all titled to the town, and now it's currently assigned to the county. It's titled to the county. So this is just going to revert back to the old way that we used to handle vehicles. We have found through some litigation that we're currently involved with, when you have town cars that are town-owned and some town cars that are county-owned, it starts to get a little bit messy in that. So this, it was designed originally when we titled them to the county for standardization, but we're finding that it's better just to have the town own their cars and have them titled to themselves, staffed with county deputies.
Instill standardized.
Yes, standardized, that is part of the contract. Because what you were seeing was Harrisburg in particular, being a larger municipality, they were trying to equip the cars a little bit differently, and stripe them a little bit differently, and do some different things without, you know, the sheriff having any input, or myself having any input. So we, we're making sure that it, within the contract, that the cars, while they may be titled one way or another, the equipment in the cars, the way they look, is all approved through the county.
So on the one hand, we're talking about standardization, but on the other hand, now we're entering into an agreement with a municipality different from the other municipalities. Is that an accurate statement?
With the goal being that they're all going to be the same. I think they were just at a different level with one municipality as we are to the others. But we're finding it's going to be cleaner, I think, in discussions with, with Rodney and with the town of Midland. It's going to be better for the county, long-term, to just have these cars back over to the county because the actions that the deputy takes, with, you know, for example, if they have an accident in that car, right now, if you're dealing, we're dealing with litigation where who's insurance takes, you know, control of what. So we're finding that it's better to have the town insure the car, have it titled to themselves, even though they're paying for it. The county's not going to be responsible for the payment of the car. They're just buying it upfront, and the towns are reimbursing us for those costs. It's just a matter of titling, really, quite frankly, is what it's amounting to.
So how many, how many sheriff's department vehicles are there in total?
Cars that the county, that the county sheriff's office operates, right at 200, probably. I haven't done.
It's in that ballpark.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, this may be too simplistic, but why would the county not just own all the vehicles, insure all the vehicles, equip all the vehicles, because you said that's been an issue in the past, and then determine what those costs were for those contract situations, and allocate those costs to those municipalities, and eliminate all of this? Who owns which, all, you know?
Yeah, the change came in 2020 when we renegotiated all the town contracts. And what we're finding, the town is still responsible, my understanding of the contract, and the deputy county manager can jump in, the towns are still responsible for all the costs. That, that, that won't change. The only thing that's changing is how we title those cars. This last group of patrol cars that were purchased were bought by the county, which we've always, and we've always paid for the cars upfront, and the towns reimbursed us for those costs. But we wanted to be the ones that buy the car, that order the cars, because we wanted standardization for the cars. We didn't want the town ordering patrol cars, and then they may be in a different make or model than what we ordered. But then the towns would come back in and reimburse us. What happened with this last group of cars was they were purchased by the county and titled to the county with the understanding that at the end of the life of those vehicles, the towns would be able to get those cars back, because they're going to still reimburse us for those costs. The titling is really the only difference in all of this. The towns are still responsible for, for buying those vehicles. What we found was that there was a municipality that did not like the fact that we did not have a deductible on the cars, so that, you know, basically, as the deputy county manager explained, you know, all of our loss comes out of risk, a risk pool that the county maintains for, for the loss of a patrol car. There were some issues with how different municipalities viewed that, and it's just cleaner that we found through that conversation with that municipality, as well as some litigation that we're involved with, where we, we felt it was better just to have the cars titled back to the towns and let the town, if there's an accident, for example, the town's insurance would cover that cost as opposed to the county. I know it's convoluted.
It is convoluted, but I do think that speaks to the, to the risk part. So, yes, we can own all the assets. I think from the town's perspective, particularly Mount Pleasant and Midland, where they don't have the resources available to replace a vehicle that costs about $55,000.
With equipment.
So if it gets totaled and there's not adequate insurance, they're going to have to come up with $55,000. That's not agreeable to either of those towns with the resources they have. So if we were willing to accept that that would be paid by the county, I don't think we would get any objection, but then it comes into a question of, is it fair to the general taxpayers to pay for vehicles that are servicing just one of the towns?
That's exactly.
So I think it's a difficult trade-off to make. Again, we can't provide the insurance at the level that they want. $500 deductible is wonderful. They get it through the League of Municipalities. It's phenomenal insurance. I think everybody wishes they could get it. But they're able to get it because they're a small town.
And again, not be, not, not kind of looking, I guess, at every particular aspect of the contract. So this car's three years into the life of the car. It's, it's, it's owned by the county, titled to the county, and it were to be totaled out, the county would be responsible at that point with their county risk pool to replace that car. But it's still the town's, it's still in the contract going to be reverted back to the town. So the town, in fact, would be getting a car that was a much newer car than what they originally would, would have gotten had the car just went through its extended life. So, you know, I've had discussions with the deputy county manager. We've met with the town of Midland. We've had some discussions with the town of Harrisburg, and we think that this is just best to revert those cars back to protect everyone's interest, including the counties and the municipalities.
So the, the town of Harrisburg and the town of Mount Pleasant have agreed to this as well, but yet only, they're not mentioned in this?
The, the town of Harrisburg, because as you're aware, through the budget process, they're adding personnel and wanting an extension of the, of the contract, five-year contract. We're still working on that contract. Mount Pleasant and Midland's, theirs is coming. Midland, Midland, this is involving two Midland cars, and I believe Mount Pleasant had purchased one. So it's just a matter of this, I'll come back up to you again with Mount Pleasant as we move forward. But they're wanting to do this changeover as quickly as possible, and I think probably for, for the county, it's in the county's best interest to do that also.
So how many cars does Harrisburg have?
Harrisburg will have at the, if, with this new contract, they will have 20, I believe, is, is right. And the county will have two of those cars. Which is the county, actually. The county cars may be coming offline soon, but I, I think all of those are still in service. So, yeah, 22 total cars, 20 of them are the town's.
20 of them are the town's, and so we're providing two of the cars?
That is correct, for the two county-funded positions that are allotted to, to the town of Harrisburg.
Yeah, which, which I've always had a bit of a concern about the equity issue on that when you look at our other municipalities, most specifically Concord and Kannapolis, that have their own taxpayer-funded police departments. So that means that a resident of Concord is paying their city taxes to fund their Concord Police Department. They're paying their county taxes, a portion of which is going to pay for law enforcement in other municipalities. And I, I mean, I know the sheriff's department does many functions throughout the entire county, but would that be a fair analysis?
It's, it is fair, maybe from a financial standpoint. Part of the contract with, when, when we have these discussions is the town of, the city of Concord, for example, their police officers have a very limited jurisdiction within the municipality of Concord. The two county-funded positions in Midland and Mount Pleasant and Harrisburg, part of the contracts allows those officers to go out into the other zones. For example, if you're on the traffic stop at 2:00 in the morning on Highway 200 at Mount Pleasant Road, you're pretty much by yourself, unless you've got some backup either from Midland or Mount Pleasant. So it allows those officers to come out of their towns and assist other officers, perform law enforcement functions. Whereas the city of Concord, for example, couldn't come out to the town of Harrisburg or the town of Midland to assist us without going through some mutual aid issues and trying to get them to, give them the jurisdiction. So that is part of the contract, and I, and I think from a commissioner's standpoint, it's one way to justify that, is that those town officers are not allocated 100% to the town. The contract stipulates they're allowed to leave those zones and leave those towns to back up and support other officers in zones that are adjacent to those municipalities. So that's one way to look at how those municipalities are treated a little bit different than, than Concord and Kannapolis. Surely, from a financial standpoint, I think that's a very valid point. But, but there are some benefits from an operational standpoint, from our perspective, of having those town cars available.
And I can tell you, Chairman Morris, the, the draft sent over to Harrisburg for their consideration did not include the language around those two county-provided deputies, because we've heard that sort of conversation. And so that's the version that they're looking at. It just has town deputies, because ultimately, the two that were provided by the county are fully at the discretion of the sheriff anyway. And so do they need to be contemplated within that agreement? We would argue they don't. So we'll see what their response is to that, but they are not included. And if that goes and gets adopted, we would follow suit with Mount Pleasant and Midland.
Right, right. Well, I certainly agree with what you're saying. You know, I'm looking at it from a perspective, if you're talking about those two municipalities that do have their own law enforcement, we're talking about 165,000 taxpayers. Or citizens out of our 230, so over 50% of the population of the county.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, it's, it's reasonable to think that way, and, and, you know, we are very cognizant of that. And, you know, part of our discussions, and I've had some very frank discussions with particular municipalities, is, is, you know, we still have the control of those deputies, and if, at any time, those deputies can be used for other resources other than the towns. And they've made, been made very aware of that, multiple times by myself. So they're assigned to those towns, but that is not necessarily part of the future going forward, if, if we need them in other places.
Well, not to bring up an uncomfortable subject, but I think that very thing you just said was a result of, of some, the financial contributions not being made because of that fact.
Yeah, yeah, you know, Chairman, I, I focus on the operations. I, I don't focus on the high-level stuff, so I'll, I'll, I'll reserve comment.
Other?
Well, I'll make a comment. Because you are 100% correct. That's exactly what, what took place. And I don't know if not having the title, and we get sideways in the execution of the contract, if that may make financial sense now, but when you get down the road and you have that situation, that may impact how that gets resolved. I, I don't know. That, that's pure speculation, and maybe that's a legal question. But, but yes, you, you are 100% accurate in bringing that up.
Another point that I wanted to make too is, Chief, you were talking about.
Another point that I wanted to make, too, is, Chief, you were talking about, we have control of the deputies. The municipalities, they get two or however many, and we give them two. But the understanding is, is that if we need one or both of those over here, then we're still in charge. We can pull them from here to there. And it goes the same thing with the fire departments. If we got a huge fire somewhere, and it's in hypothetically, say it's in Coldwater's Fire District, well, if it was a huge enough fire, then not necessarily would Coldwater be the only one. They would be others, because they want to get that fire out. That's the job, get the fire out. And for law enforcement activity, we want to get on it, you know, and just like in the case of Midland, I mean, Locust being next door, I've heard stories where the, where that if there wasn't a law enforcement officer readily available in the Midland or the Harrisburg area, then the nearest municipality would jump in, even if it's out of the county, which in that case, it was in, like, Locust. Locust would reciprocate with us back and forth. What's fair for one is fair for the other.
Yeah.
And I think that's where the problem run in. It cannot be specifically 24/7 for this town limit, so.
Yeah, again, we've had, the sheriff and I, and I know the deputy county manager's been involved in some of these as well, we've had some conversations with all of the municipalities, and those thoughts have been relayed to them on numerous occasions. The fact is, those two officers are given to the towns, and we assign them to the towns, but those officers, as part of the contract, can go outside of the town and assist other officers when necessary. And again, that's where I think we reap the benefit of having that contract in place with those two officers assigned to Midland or Mount Pleasant or any of the other municipalities for that matter. So, I mean, we do get some benefit. I don't think it's all one way, but certainly, I understand that point, and we try to make sure that your comments and the comments of Commissioner Kaiger and the chairman are all taken back to those municipalities and relayed to them. So we try to do that to the best of our ability and let them understand that.
But just one last comment, and that is, if the municipalities want total control, then they should pay for all the officers, not just the two that we give them. They should pay for those two as well, you know, and I don't know, that's why I was asking at some point, those discussions need to come up with those contracts and be more specific, because there are times in a growing community like Cabarrus County that you have to step out of your district to help someone else. And, but if they won't complete 124/7% control, then they'll just pay for all of it instead of us giving them anything. And that's just my thoughts on it. Everybody's got their own thoughts, but we'll need to discuss that at some point.
So we've had a number of questions. Perhaps one of you, in addition to having a number of questions, were being asked to suspend our rules and act on this tonight. Can you enlighten us on the urgency that would require us to deviate from our standard procedure?
Yeah, I think the risk is with the vehicles being on the road, each passing day is an opportunity for something to go wrong, and with them not having the insurance the town prefers, that puts us at financial risk, as from the county perspective.
How long have the vehicles been on the road?
The two particular Midland cars that the deputy county manager is referring to have been on the road for approximately, one longer than the other, one, two months, one probably a month, maybe three weeks. I'm not really sure about the second one. I know the first one, the first one has been on the road for probably a month and a half, two months.
But, and of course, you said these are the first replacement vehicles under this new contract, but prior to that, we've had, well, we got 20 on the road in Harrisburg under that contract, right?
Not all of them. Since 2020, when the new contracts were negotiated, any new cars that were purchased after that point were titled to the county. Prior to that, which we still are within that four-year cycle, there are some that are town-owned, too. It just kind of cleans it up and gives them all back to the towns.
Right.
And that's the ultimate goal. I know we're dealing with Midland at this moment, but that's the ultimate goal within the next several months, as these contracts are negotiated, is to revert all these back. We just, after we did it and after the contracts and after the questions were brought up, I think in discussions with the deputy county manager, we feel that this is in the best interest of everyone involved, is to revert these cars back to the town and let them insure their own cars that are manned, and it's just one less thing that we have to worry about if one of these cars are added to total loss at some point in time due to an accident, so.
Okay, commissioners, you've heard the request. What would be your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules. We're seeking a new county contract.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we do have a request for a motion to approve the donation of county assets 8743 and 8744 to the town of Midland.
I would like to amend that to say, once the check, the proceeds for it have been received.
And do you make that in the form of a motion?
I will. Would you like me to repeat it in the form of a motion?
No, as long as the clerk got it, I think we're good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you for the patience with the questions. Next up is item 4.7, finance authority provisions, and Deputy County Manager Rodney Harris, we'll talk about that one.
So this item is some housekeeping. As you know, Wendy is leaving us as finance director. This is her last meeting, and I know she'll be heading up here shortly for numerous agenda items. So this will do basically three different items. So the first is, it will change from the board chair to the county manager, the check signatures for the county. That is aligning more consistently with how other municipalities and counties do this across the state, with the logic that typically county managers are a little more stable than board chairs, although we've been fortunate to have a stable board chair here. That's sort of the logic to that.
I would debate that.
It's debatable. The second is, it would authorize both the county manager and the finance officer to access our financial institutions or our banking. And then the last item is naming our new finance officer, James Howden, who will be joining us from Rowan County, where he's currently the finance director there, and he will start on July 18th. So that's what this items would do.
Okay, questions for Rodney? I will agree, our county manager is very stable, but I wouldn't say more stable. Okay, if there are no questions on that item, we will move to item 4.8, fund balance appropriation for Cabarrus County schools. Rodney has that one as well.
So I've got some company, yeah, you can come on up. So this one came to us, I think, last week or the week before, from Carol Herndon, the chief financial officer for Cabarrus County Schools. They are requesting to transfer money out of their fund balance to their capital outlay account, and that requires the approval of this board in order for them to do that. They want to use this funding on turf fields and track improvements at Concord and Mount Pleasant High Schools. And so you have a request letter and a resolution from the Board of Education, making the formal request to this board, and this action would allow them to proceed with those purchases. And then, due to time constraints, they are also asking for the rules to be suspended so that they can move forward with that project or those projects. So we can take any questions.
When you say turf fields, do you mean artificial turf fields or?
Yes, sir, Chairman Morris, those, the athletic turf fields for football for both Mount Pleasant High School and Concord High School are earmarked to be replaced with synthetic turf, as we did at J.M. Robinson, Cox Mill, and the two additional fields at West Cabarrus High School with the previous agreement with the CVB.
So will that give us 100%?
No, that gives us, so that of the eight schools, that gives us six that will have turf fields. The two remaining schools then would be Hickory Ridge High School and Northwest Cabarrus High School.
And as we've replaced Northwest High School, that will take care of that one, so really it would be.
Correct. It'd just be Hickory Ridge would be the one remaining school left. And we are doing synthetic track, rubberized tracks and turf at the same time on these schools.
But we still haven't solved the issue. I mean, if I remember correctly, we had no track fields at any of our high schools that were sufficient to qualify for?
That is correct. So the West Cabarrus High School was the first new rubberized track that the district had done when that school was opened in 2018.
But we don't qualify to host district meets?
No, you can host district meets at that track.
That's the only one?
Yeah, and if we get too much further into that discussion, I'll have to bring somebody else in, because there are levels of certification that are, you're able to obtain at a rubberized track, but that does vary based on the style of rubberized track you have.
Questions?
I do. Brian, this is a substantial amount of money coming from the school board's fund balance, and I appreciate them doing this, because it's something that we might have done at some point. This would just expedite it quite a bit. But the question is, because I don't ever recall the school system asking us to give them permission to spend their money. And so I just wonder, is there some type of a criteria that brings this to us, other than, what I mean is, if it was, you know, they've done redistricting plans. They took $150,000 from their fund balance. This is $3.5 million. Is this amount the reason they're bringing it to us for our approval? Or is there some other criteria?
I can let you off the hot seat.
Yeah, I was going to say the statute requires it.
So it's because the statute requires it, because they are transferring it to a capital outlay account. So if they were using it for general operating expenditures, they would not need this board's approval, because they're going to transfer it to a capital use, and we're responsible for capital, they need your approval.
Good explanation, and like I said a while ago, I really appreciate the school system doing this, because it's something that we probably would do at some point, and it just saves us that. But they'll get it back on the roof or something, so either way, you know, they'll get it, but...
Mr. Taylor's right behind me.
Yeah, I noticed that, and we had a good talk earlier about roofs, didn't we? Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions or comments? This, too, is a request for us to suspend our rules and to vote on this item tonight.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and I would entertain a motion to approve the request as presented and adopt the resolution which is attached to your agenda.
I'd like to motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we move now to item 4.9, retention payment for Cabarrus Health Alliance employees, and I have down Mr. Downs for that one, but I'm happy to...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. I was looking at the next line. All right. It's not touchscreen, right?
No, it's not. They keep switching computers on us every week. Huh?
Yes.
I will, go ahead.
I say, this program and this recommendation here is from several discussions now, is that as this board provided bonuses or appreciation, one-time payments to county employees for the amount of $5,000 per employee, and however, the Health Alliance was right in the middle of the storm with us going through this whole process. In fact, they were out in front, in most cases, even more than we were, trying to manage the situation with the COVID over the last two and a half years or so. But, so the opportunity, there are still funds left, federal fund grant money, that is available for such a use. So what we are proposing to you is to bring forth recognizing the Health Alliance employees as well. They did receive an internal award from earlier in the year. However, I think that was $1,000 per employee. So if you would so choose or agree with, that we would recommend that you provide the $5,000 for them minus what they've already received. So it would not be the full five, it would be what they received ahead of time previously, and then the difference would bring them to $5,000.
My question, are we following the same format for these federal funds as we did for county employees? Is it the same format based on length of service?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, it should be on your front page there, and it is based on that. Rodney worked very closely with Aaron Chu in providing the number of employees, their tenure as well, and to make sure that the numbers came out right, right? Do you want to add to that, Rodney, or I think?
No, I just think the bottom line is, we think it will cost, and it depends on fluctuations in staffing, around $800,000. We think, because we're currently going through reconciliation of the ARPA money remaining, that we probably have in the $1.1 to $1.3 million of unallocated funding. So there is sufficient resources. We do have some other pending requests from nonprofits for additional funding that can be considered, but obviously, this would eat up a substantial portion of that unallocated amount.
And you remember, these were the employees, again, on the front line. They were out at the arena with those vaccination clinics. They were in the clinics at the Health Alliance. They were out in the community at the different clinics, making sure that whatever needed to be done to help those, and in some instances, they couldn't help themselves, so they had to go out to them and provide the assistance and to help them get through the COVID, whether it was a vaccine, whether it was just a checkup or a wellness checkup or that type of thing. So they are there on the front line. So we are recommending that with some of the additional remaining funds, that you provide this, that same incentive to them as well.
I'll speak up and say, I had the opportunity to work several days volunteering with the clinics at the arena, and I couldn't agree with this opportunity more wholeheartedly. Yes, it's their job, but a pandemic was not their job, and the stress and all that they went through during that time to make sure that our citizens were healthy, but the attitude with which they did it was just incredible. No matter when you were out there, they were upbeat, they were doing their thing. Nobody was complaining about being there, and they just seemed happy to be there to help the citizens. And that, again, speaks volumes for this county, our county staff, as well as how everybody steps up in a time of need, and that doesn't happen everywhere, so we're very fortunate. So I'm in favor of it.
I totally agree with what Commissioner Honeycutt said. This by no means was a small undertaking on the Health Alliance's part. I don't recall, someone else might, can recall, the percentage of Cabarrus County citizens that were vaccinated, and pretty much all of that came from the Health Alliance, but, you know, when you're looking at a county, 230,000 people, thereabouts, and 59%, 59% of our people were vaccinated with either one or more of the vaccines, that was a huge undertaking, and it wasn't just like an eight-to-five type thing either. They were a lot of people doing a lot of work, putting theirself in harm's way, just like many of our people did. And so I wholeheartedly think this is a good thing. My only regret... My only regret is that we hadn't done it sooner. You know, I wish we could have done it sooner, but we had to get it worked out. And it takes time to do these things. But I'm glad we're getting it done now.
And I did fail to say, anybody who got their vaccine through the arena saw the organization and the efficiency with which that was done and in such a short period of time. And all the volunteers that it took and coordinating lunches. I mean, it was a huge undertaking and done so well in such a short period of time. So I should have said that as well. Sorry.
We had several visiting elected officials from other counties and through state government be here. And we made sure we took them out there. And I think as soon as they left here, they went home bragging that, because that's not what was happening so easily in their locations. So.
And I'll second what you say. I was on some of those visits with some of those state elected officials. And the comment, I said, wow, that we haven't seen it quite this well organized. So they were extremely complimentary. And I think probably a lot of them came back and visited and used that as an example. And so what this accomplishes is just providing the same level of appreciation and recognition to these folks, just like the other county employees, like our sheriff's department, our parks and rec people. Yeah, we've got, we've got people all around the room that can talk about school nurses that were doing jobs other than school nurses and library employees that were working at parks. I mean, we had an incredibly cooperative group of folks. So I, you know, can't speak highly enough about all the county staff. And certainly, the Health Alliance is under a little bit of a different category. That's the reason that they were not included in that initial amount. But I think it's the right thing to do. And we're using the funds that were provided to us for those purposes. So I'm very much in favor of it.
Don't want to open a can of worms or anything, but it just come to my thought. I know because I went to the help, the arena, my wife and I both did. And there were a number of physicians that were there as well.
Yes.
On-site physicians that they took away from their patientry and all of that to be out there for whatever reason. And I don't know that with some of the remaining money, I mean, you can't, how far do you go? You know, we had hundreds of volunteers, hundreds of volunteers. But when you get to the physicians taking their time out, I wonder if there's a way that we might could consider them some way. Rodney, what do you think? Is that opening a can of worms because you had so many volunteers?
Yeah, that would be a tough one. I would actually defer to legal on that one probably because there might be some constitutional issues about.
I'm not legal, but I would step in and say, I was out there and had the opportunity to see a lot of the physicians who were working out there. And I honestly don't think they would be looking for anything. I could be wrong. But you know, they were, the people who came through and had issues and answered certain questions on the forms prior to, then they evaluated those forms and decided, you know, what they should do from that perspective and how long they should wait out in the parking lot, you know, before they were cleared and that kind of thing. And I really, I could be wrong. I shouldn't be speaking for them. But I think that, I really think the ones that I was out there with were just happy and proud to be able to do something to help out. Now. I might get a lot of phone calls tomorrow. We'll see.
Well, I do agree with you Diane. More than likely, that's, that's just what they do. They try to help people. And so they probably wouldn't take anything if we did offer them anything. But I didn't want them to go unrecognized though. The volunteers, the physicians that helped us come this far through the only pandemic I've ever been in in my lifetime. Hope I don't go through another one. But it took those people of their time and their efforts to help bring us to this point. So I didn't want them to go unrecognized.
Appreciate those comments. Anything additional? If not, we will move to item 4.10, American Rescue Act Plan Funds for Habitat for Humanity. And we are happy to have Wendy Hagler to the microphone on her. I don't know if the swan song would be a correct description, but her last meeting with us.
All right. Good afternoon. So you approved an additional $500,000 for Habitat for Humanity in April. At that time, they had requested money for critical home repairs, but they are now requesting that that $500,000 be spread out through new construction, critical repairs, indirect cost in land and in one of the attachments there's an approved budget and then their request at the bottom. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Questions?
Getting my microphone's right behind me. Sorry. They're basically just asking for flexibility?
Yes. So it's not additional funds, it's just flexibility of how they spend the funds.
Any other questions for Wendy? Okay, I think you've got the next item also, 4.11.
Yes. This is budgeting the pay-go or projects that we're paying for cash in the FY23 budget. Rodney supplied me with a list. And there's a budget amendment and capital project ordinances that will accomplish budgeting the approved projects on that list. And this will be paid for. There's 10 million or 10.8 that was already budgeted for a capital project fund. And then they'll, we're appropriating 8.2 additional fund balance. This will fund the projects in that list. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Wendy on those items? Okay, very good. And next up is item 4.12, and this is Wendy along with Brian Cohn.
Actually, Mr. Taylor's gonna come help me with that one.
Okay.
The schools are requesting money to be transferred or to be used for the RCC mobile units. And this will come from completed projects that we gave them for deferred maintenance. And I'll let him answer any questions that you have.
No questions? I mean, he's been sitting here the entire, entire meeting.
Two hours.
That's fine. I will put a plug in for those roofs, Mr. Chu.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's nice to see all of you.
Okay, we move to item 4.13, Request for Road Improvements at R. Brown McAllister.
So we have started with the road improvements. This is reimbursable by the state. So we, this budget amendment will budget 350,000 for road improvements for R. Brown. So it's the revenue and the expenditure budget. And I'll let him answer any questions on how the funds will be spent.
Questions?
So you're not really doing any work. You're just surveying and designing and bidding and procuring.
That is correct. So we're trying, obviously, the length of time that it takes to get this process completed on these projects continues to just extend out. So in an effort to mitigate that timing and it to align better with the sequence of when we need to perform the improvements, we had talked with the county about possibly funding these elements of that project in order to get that done sooner rather than later and identify what the expenses are going to be so that we can provide those amounts to the state and to the city as to what their portions would be for reimbursement. Because it just takes longer to get that process done.
Interrupted you. You covered it?
Yeah.
Okay, any questions on that item? All right, thank you. And we move to 4.14, Contingency Fund Request for Courthouse Project. And that's Wendy and Kyle.
This comes before you because we will be moving money from contingency. And I'll let Kyle explain the need for it. But the budget amendment is moving $1 million from contingency to FFNE.
So you don't want to do the whole thing?
No.
From project contingency?
Yes, in the courthouse. So the total for the courthouse that we're spending is not more, but it's required to come before the board since we're moving money from contingency.
And I can explain why. So obviously, when we started the courthouse funding project several years ago, if you remember when we started clearing the buildings out there, we threw all these different pots of money together. Our furniture budget is actually two different budgets. It's a budget for items that are over $5,000 unit cost, meaning large table, pretty much conference room tables or large workstation. It's over 5,000. And then there's another budget that is for all items under $5,000. So like a chair. And we have those two. And Wendy and I have to work together as we kind of go through the projections for me to figure out how to balance out that money. We also use those two budgets to purchase all of the card readers, all of the cameras, the public art, and then the pews that I came in front of the board a couple of weeks ago. So all that comes from those different accounts. And yes, there has been significant material increases, specifically in the wood. But also, as we were doing the scope of the project, we created those accounts prior to even knowing how large the building was and how many courtrooms we'd be furnishing and everything. So this is truing that up. But a good portion of those funds have gone into the, I will call them the I T S or security components, not to throw Todd under the bus because we all knew they were coming. But that's a million dollars of the FFNE budget that we're putting in, in card readers and cameras and security. And then the other portion of it is obviously the public art. We never knew we were going to go down that road when we set these budgets up prior to the project. So this is truing that up with those amounts.
Questions for Kyle? That all makes sense? Thank you. We will move now to item 4.15, East Gold Hill Volunteer Fire Department to acquire new capital assets. And Wendy has that one as well.
So the fire department came to the finance department and requested the attached letter to be signed by Chairman Morris to, according to Laura, this needs to come before the board to be approved. So he has permission to sign the letter.
Questions commissioners? Good question. Yeah. Okay, we will move to item 4.16, Lottery Proceeds Allocated for Rowan County Schools Within Kannapla City School District.
So Rowan County is requesting $323,000. The Kannapla City School funds is all in the Cabarrus County allocation. So they have to get approval from our board because we have to do a budget amendment and a project ordinance to budget these funds. And then we'll turn those over to Rowan County once we receive them. So it's signed by their, sort of a weird process because it's signed by their board. It's Rowan County. But the funds are actually in the Cabarrus County, I guess, pot of money for Kannapla City schools.
Any questions on that one? Okay, we move to 4.17, Occupancy Tax Waiver.
This is for Great Wolf Lodge. So they request a waiver of $22,249.26 for the month of February. They are a month late. It was oversight on their part, but it is their first violation in four years. And they are now in a good standing.
Any questions on that one? Okay, 4.18, Mount Pleasant Library Senior Center and Park Naming Discussion. Kyle will be back with us for that one.
Good evening again. County staff wants to discuss the naming of the complex as it's currently under design. And as we start to go through the schematic and the D D drawings and start to bring some of that to the board and obviously to staff, we wanted to kind of get a handle on the name since it is a co-used facility and also encompasses a park. The county does not have an established naming policy, but staff has discussed internally and they are recommending either the Cabarrus County Library and Senior Center at Mount Pleasant or the Cabarrus County Library and Active and Living Center at Mount Pleasant. And the county staff is recommending the Virginia Foil Park be the park component of the complex. And the inclusion of Virginia foil into the name of the park is a stipulation in the purchasing agreement for the property. And we do have Londa Strong on virtually, and we have Byron Hagler in the crowd. And I'm sure if Londa wants to speak to the name Senior Center versus Active Living Center. So Londa, I'll let you go ahead.
Well, thank you. As some of you all may remember, when the departments merged, there was a lot of discussion about names. And it has just kind of calmed down over the last little while. Although we have brought this up numerous times, the advisory council has. Not because we want to name change. It's one of the national trends in how to get more active, more younger folks, the baby, us baby boomers, into the senior centers. And that's by taking the name senior out of the title. So that's where all of this came from. And there have been numerous, numerous names that have been talked about, nothing recommended, talked about by the advisory council. Commissioner Morris was at the, excuse me, Commissioner Honeycutt was at the last meeting. And there was a little discussion there. She may want to elaborate on that. One of the things that I did want to bring up is that like when Raleigh made their changes, they're now active adult centers, they only named the new ones. They didn't go back and rename the existing centers that they had. So as they came on board, they were changing the names. So I just wanted to make you all aware of that. And it's not just because we want to change in name. It's that we're trying to find more ways to get the younger folks involved as well.
Thank you, Londa. Commissioner Honeycutt, did you have?
Well, I will say, I think everybody hears, if you pay attention to the end of the meetings in the chambers, there is always a long list of activities that the seniors do. I think the seniors are more active than a lot of people. And so I think that there comes the wish to go to the active living centers because truly, that really states what happens there is active living. So I think the people who are going would like to see that happen because they think it would also, like I say, help bring others in. I will say this because my grandmother passed away a long time ago. But I would say, you know, you ought to go to the senior center and play cards. And she was 83. And she said, I'm not going there with those old people. You know, I'm thinking, okay, you know. So anyway, I think taking the senior name out and doing the active living might encourage more people to come, you know, on this. So that's just my experience.
These are, as Londa said, these are some of the same conversations we had back when we were naming the department and moving forward. And there was a very heavy lobby where active living instead of just parking rec or something like that.
I am very much in favor of the Cabarrus County Library and Active Living Center. I would myself personally probably be more likely to attend that than the senior center. But yes, and I do remember those conversations in 2010, 2011, when the world was going to come to an end, when those departments were consolidated. And I think overwhelmingly, everybody has been extremely pleased with how well it has turned out. So I think this is just a further step in that very positive situation. Other comments or questions? Does that give you what you need?
Yeah, I think you would need to make a motion because there was two choices for either active living center or senior center and then the park as long as you're okay.
I have a check. Is that in our consent? Anything on that? Yeah.
Okay.
Just, yeah. Very good.
Okay.
All right.
It's gonna be a big sign.
Yeah. And so we will move to 4.19, Same Discussion, Different Place.
It is same discussion, different place. This will be a little bit different, whereas this would be Cabarrus County Library and Senior Center at Afton Ridge or Cabarrus County Library and Active Living Center at Afton Ridge. So taking out the Mount Pleasant and obviously putting in the Afton Ridge. And that was a discussion with county leadership that we felt that's an established park. We did check with the owner and they did not have an issue with us utilizing that name.
Yep, I think that is unanimous.
Great.
Okay, we move now to item 4.20, Public Safety Training Facility Design Team Selection.
On January 31st of 2022, Cabarrus County posted a request for qualifications for design services for the multi-jurisdictional public safety training facility in Concord, North Carolina. The county received six submittal packages on February 28th, 2022. A panel committee reviewed these submissions and chose three firms for virtual interviews, which were scheduled for May 9th, 2022. The panel committee consisted of members of administration, law enforcement, and fire safety from both Cabarrus County, City of Concord, and City of Conaples. On May 23rd of 2022, the panel committee convened to discuss the interviews and make a final selection on the design firm for the project. The panel committee is recommending that ADW Architects be chosen as the design firm.
Questions for Kyle?
I could walk you through the process, or who was on the panel committee, or how it all came together.
I was just going to add, the earlier agenda item where we set aside the funding for the Pago projects had $2 million for the design work. However, what still is outstanding is an agreement between the county and the municipalities around what cost sharing would look like, both for design and construction, and also for the operation of the facility. And so, this agreement would not be executed until those details have been worked out.
Yeah, and I did want to add that this is very much a collaborative project between the municipalities and the county that we've talked about for a number of years now, and that would be utilizing some of the property that we gained from the state of North Carolina in the Jackson Training School project transfer. So, that's another added benefit from that project. So, I'm glad you added that, Rodney, because I was curious where we were in that process.
Well, for full transparency for the board, we haven't acquired all that property just yet. It's still in the process.
Not all of it.
Not all of it.
Some of it. We're chiseling away.
A good portion, yes, we are chiseling away. One of the advantages to the design firm that we chose, and all the design firms have some sort of entity that handles the business operations in multi-jurisdictional ranges. We're not the only ones that have them. So, we really, several of the members of the panel committee that voted felt very strongly about this design firm, that they were partnered with a group that does essentially nothing but consulting, training facilities all over the nation, and helping them figure out their MOUs, their business plans, how to bill, what the trends are. And that portion of it was very important to everybody on the panel, but specifically Rodney and myself, was to be able to get some of that insight on how to assist us with that prior to go into any design. And I know that Rodney had made a comment that the design contract would not happen before we have an agreement in place, and he's correct, but we most likely will be consulting with that group prior to putting an agreement in place.
I was going to say, we're still trying to get all the partners in place and see who is actually going to participate, and at what level are they going to participate.
Oh, there you go. I was just getting ready to commend all of the partners, City of Concord, Conaples, and the county for coming together and saving taxpayers money by having one fire and safety as opposed to three fire and safety locations. So, hopefully, I know we've got three 911 centers that, you know, taxpayers are paying for three, whereas we could possibly have had one. So, I think if we can come to the table and make this happen, that will be an improvement and good for our citizens.
We will definitely have partners out there. The partners may look different, whether it's funding capital side, or just funding operations, or participating in training, or even just renting the facility, so when they need to train themselves. So, we'll see how that goes. So, we're positive direction. We're moving forward, so hopefully we can report back to you soon on how that's going to look. And I did want to call out, even though the agenda item didn't mention them, that we have had good conversations with the town of Harrisburg. They have their own fire department, and they have a future CIP project for a fire training facility, and so they are also engaged. And again, we don't know what level of participation, if any, but we're engaging them as well.
Yes, they reviewed all the submittals. They just weren't involved with the interview process and the voting process, but we did pass those along.
Okay, other questions on that item? Okay, we move to item 4.21, Recommended Approval of Preferred Alternates for Courthouse Expansion Project.
Well, hard to believe, but we're getting ready to go out and bid for GMP3 or Phase 3, which is the renovations to the 1975 courthouse. And I've been up in front of you for this before on preferred alternates for this exact project and for other projects, and that's what happens when we do anything, construction manager at risk. North Carolina General Statute 133-3 requires that performance standards be used when specifying products. The statute also allows preferred brands of equipment to be billed as an, bid as an alternate of the Cabarrus County Courthouse Expansion Project, provided that performance standards were approved by the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners. To be approved, the alternate must either provide a cost savings, or maintain and improve the functioning of a process, or a system affected by the brand alternate. Approval is requested for the preferred brand alternates for the equipment as indicated on the attachment. So, when I came to you for GMP2, I was giving you the justifications that the equipment that we were putting into that building was what we were using in other county locations. And we would go with standardization. There was local vendors that we could involve with service contracts on. This preferred alternate package is a little bit different. So, this preferred alternate package is referencing the big 250,000 square foot new courthouse across the street and saying, as we do everything in the renovation of the 1975 courthouse, which will be connected, you want to use all the same brick, all the same exterior, everything else, because the intent of design is the same. It goes from everything from fire alarms, to brick, to concrete panels, to wood panels, so that basically, when the two buildings are put together, there will be a level of continuity between the two buildings. And Silling and Messer spent a lot of time verbalizing that, and you can all read through it, but the first two paragraphs of each heading are about the same in terms of the intent and the narrative of the design.
Questions on that item?
Not on that one specifically about those items, but just the courthouse in general. We've had a couple items previously with, where we've, you've mentioned materials. And I know what I'm seeing out in my professional life away from county government, and what you've mentioned before, was difficulty in getting some items, changes, this, that, and the other. And I guess I just, I had a curiosity, since you are sitting here, if that's had, or what kind of schedule impact that has had on, I know the item we just had was the renovation work, but on the new courthouse, is what we're seeing out, what I'm seeing out, is that having an impact on your schedule?
Significant. So, the exterior of the building is coming along. I'm sure you're all seeing there are some gaps. Those aren't really material gaps. Those are fire stopping, fireproofing, and some other redo issues with some of the subs, of things that we want to get redone before we put on the rest of the facade. Where we're struggling is interior of the building. And I will be coming up in front of the board in August to provide an update, and at that update, I will be explaining to the board that we'll be pushing out the opening of the building. So, I fully expect to not be open to the public in March, probably the end of March is our best case scenario. And that is 100% across the board. It is materials, and then it is a good portion of the 2018 code in terms of fire stopping and what you have to do to provide that. In the past, it was the authority having jurisdiction would inspect those, and now it is our third-party group, meaning we're paying a group to do all those inspections. And that is extremely time-consuming on how that affects every single sub. And all the way down the line, compounded when you don't have the materials to install and fire stop, it even makes it worse. And you understand, they can't just come through and inspect one little thing and say, "Okay, you can build around that." It has to be the entire assembly. So, it has been very, very challenging, and Messer has done an excellent job, and it's why you look at the outside of the building and you think that everything is moving the way that it should. If you walked the interior of the building, you would understand that we have certain finishes down that we would have liked to have probably done four months from now, but we had to do them first because that's what was ready, and the millwork's not ready. And one could say, "Is it wood, Kyle? Is it conduit?" Is it, on my project, it happens to be wood right now. But I can tell you on my other projects, everything I'm hearing about is electrical and steel. So, it kind of ebbs and flows on what you're doing. So, I plan on coming in front of the board in August with a very detailed explanation of, you know, the five or six main drivers, and also what that does to the schedule. And I've actually not even met with Judge McGee or the courthouse staff to let them know this yet. So, I'm just going to do that, but we will go ahead and get that out of the way now. But yes, we will be delaying the opening of it.
Well, that doesn't, I guess that doesn't really surprise me, like I said, what I see on a daily basis. On a more positive note, I was at, I went to a wedding on Saturday at Hotel Concord and had family in town, so of course, I took the opportunity to pack everybody in the car and said, "Hey, let me show you the new Cabarrus County courthouse," and drove them over here. And as I was pointing things out, I'm sure everybody was wondering why in the world we were riding around in coats and ties looking at the courthouse. But the exterior does, it looks phenomenal. I'm sure Messer's dealing with those issues the best that they can. You know, the stuff I look at, you know, I'm at 50,000 feet. I don't deal with it day to day to day, but I see it, and I see the trends, and material is, there are certain things, and it does, it's cyclical. Sometimes you can get some things, and then all of a sudden, that stuff disappears, and you can't get it anymore, and something else that you couldn't get, you now can get, so.
Well, it's a domino effect. If I can't open up those courtrooms, I can't install the pews that I just asked, you know, last minute asked you to go ahead and approve, and already I'm looking at those in terms of the fabrication time for those, and it's just, it's a domino effect of, you can't button up those rooms until you have all the finishes. And it's just very, very difficult as they, as every single subcontractor fights this. It's not just us.
You're placing a significant amount of pressure on March of 2023. You've already promised to open the courthouse and the parking deck. There may be others.
Well, the EMS headquarters is still in line for April 2023, so that's, I'm going all for kind of the spring of 2023, and then y'all won't have to see.
We like, we like good weather. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll move to item 4.22, Duke Energy Easement for Sheriff's Department Firing Range. And have David and Kyle on that one. Kyle's leaving, so he must.
Coming right back.
Sorry about that.
No, no.
We are starting another project out of the firing range. If you recall, several years ago, we excavated the actual barrier walls that they shoot into. When we did that, we destroyed a, what they call their shoot house, which is a simulation house, which basically looks like a bunch of cubes or workstations you would almost see like in our finance department. But the officers hug the walls, and obviously with weapon drawn, that's where they do their training. When we destroyed this complex that was made of old wood, and it was probably more termites holding hands than it was structural wood, we destroyed that. It was actually built into one of the barrier walls, and we destroyed it knowing that we were going to come back and buy a, it's actually a local company that makes these type of shoot houses and a lot of different ballistic training facilities. They're contact, and they're right outside of Cabarrus County. We knew we were going to come back and replace them, and when we, the sheriff's department and myself met, we decided to build a shelter to put these under so they weren't exposed, and also so the officers could train in some inclement weather. So, as part of that, we're building this shelter. The shelter will have a large fan and several outlets, and we need to bring in an electric service out at the range. If you know where that is, it's right next to Landfill and Irish Potato. And at the same time, the gate that's out there, that is a rolling gate, meaning every single day, somebody from the sheriff's department has to open and close that. And we also can't track who goes in and who goes out, because it's all key, padlock key. So, we're putting this electric service out there, not only to provide electricity to the shelter for the shoot simulation house, but also to provide a gate operator that'll open that gate, and it'll actually go with a card reader, so we can start to track and see who's out there, just so that it has a higher level of security. And that easement from Duke is what that is.
It's a standard easement. We've reviewed it for legal sufficiency. It's just pretty pro forma.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules of procedure due to time constraints? Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and I would entertain a motion to authorize the county manager to grant the attached easement between Cabarrus County and Duke Energy, subject to review by the county attorney. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
One other thing on the sheriff's facility. We are still continuing to spend money out there while we are designing a new one. So, some of those will be able to be, continue to be used, because most likely the firing range on the, at the public safety is going to be an indoor range, so we'll still need the outdoor, plus the snipers and some of the others as well. So, we're not wasting money. We're up fitting now, but it's still two years out before we would even open up a public safety facility. Or is that wishful thinking it's two years?
Yes.
I have more faith in you than that, so. It's not that it's getting everybody to agree on it, so this is not just one jurisdiction that we're going to be doing. But just wanted to let you know, we are continuing to improve what's out there because they still need to continually train. But even when we open up the new facility and those amenities, we're going to still continue to use that at the other location as well.
Thank you. And we move to item 4.23, from Planning and Development, Request from City of Concord Parks and Recreation. We're happy to have Kelly Sifford to talk about that item.
Thank you. In the spirit of continued cooperation, the City of Concord has approached us regarding the property. Can you pull up the map? So, on Branch View, this is actually part of Concord High School's property. It's on the opposite side of the road, however. This is an area that they can extend the greenway into. That is actually a survey of it. It's very small. So, there's 1.566 acres. The left-hand portion of that, the small parcel is already in Concord's possession. We actually just got this paid off recently, and it is out from under any financing. So, we have the opportunity to either provide this fee simple to them and let them take possession of the property, or do an easement on the property. If you'll go to the next map, I'd like to show you, though, this property is 100% in the floodplain. So, it is of no value for us, the county here, to construct anything. It would be thoroughly in the floodplain. So, I wanted to put the option before you decide which you wanted to take.
I think you meant a lease instead of an easement.
Well, we could, we have multiple options. A lease is also an option.
That property is full of other easements. It's really almost worthless to us, but it's worth something to them.
Yes, I did fail to mention that. If you go back to that, there are four separate sewer easements. See those lines running through the property? There are separate sewer easements and drainage easements running through that property, so it's completely unbuildable outside of the fact that it is in the floodplain. It is just, it was just attached to the parcel that Concord High School was on, I suspect, because we had this property long before Branch View was Branch View. So, that parcel is just kind of hanging out there.
Is there any reason why you wouldn't just do the fee simple?
I thought that was going to be the recommended.
That would be my recommendation. We have no, we have no use for that property whatsoever.
Haven't we talked about this once before?
I think we did talk about it, but because we still had financing, this, we asked them to wait and so that we could clear up the financing part of this.
Right.
And that has been done now, so. So this gives us more flexibility because before, a lease, I guess, would have been our only option. This gives us other options.
I think I saw three positive head nods, and I'm in agreement with that as well.
And one quick update, you mentioned the Stonewall Jackson transfer, and Kyle mentioned that it has not fully occurred yet. Myself and some other staff members will be meeting the historic staff from the state next week, and they're doing one final sweep of the property before they decide what covenants should be written and how they should be written, which is part of our transfer process. So that is happening next week.
Great. Excellent.
Just got another request today from a movie studio. They wanted to use it to film a movie out there. Haven't had a chance to call them back and tell them that we don't own it yet, so we can't give you an answer.
Okay, we go now to item 4.24 from the sheriff's office, acceptance of a justice assistance grant.
Yes, so this is actually a grant that was generated by the Concord Police Department as a function of us having the jail. They were mandated to give us a portion of those proceeds. And that amount is, maybe in your pocket?
3,530.
That's it. So we're just asking that the board approve the acceptance of those funds from the Concord Police Department's JAG grant.
Questions on that item? All right, sir. I think you have the next one as well.
Yes. So as part of our initial Governor's Highway Safety Program grant, the board approved three years ago, the acceptance of that grant during those three years, our traffic unit has been very active. Of course, as the population increases and the roads become more congested, we're finding that we're having more and more citizen complaints about traffic. And so they've again been very active. I do have a few details from the current traffic unit from October 1st to June 20th of this year, October 1st of last year to June 20th of this year. They've made 1,127 traffic stops, issued 1,032 citations. Part of the grant is also an education component. So they've done 29 education events, including three weeks, one week at Hickory Ridge, one week at Mount Pleasant High School, one week at Northwest Cabarrus, where they interactively taught students about distracted driving to over 800 high school students during that time. They participated in eight multi-agency checkpoints, 50 saturation patrols, and a number of seatbelt and speed enforcement initiatives, including 54 speed enforcement initiatives. So they've been very busy. This grant is a separate grant. This is, October will be the end of the third year of the initial Governor's Highway Safety Program grant. So those two positions become fully county funded at this point. This grant's going to pick up two more officers, starting in October, and carry those through the three years that the project is funded through Governor's Highway to ultimately these also being county funded positions starting year four. So the amount of this grant from the Governor's Highway Safety Program is 216,763 dollars. Federal funding through the Governor's Highway Safety Grant, again, that's going to fund two additional officers for our traffic unit and education initiative.
Okay, any questions for Chief Deputy Begley?
One last thing. It's tucked in there, and I'm not sure if the board is aware, and I can get this documentation to Lauren. There's also, we discussed before and came before the board for a Bike Safe grant that's also through Governor's Highway Safety Program. That grant is again up, and we're eligible to receive 5,000. That is a non-matching county grant. The Bike Safe Program just teaches motorcycle riders safe driving techniques, defensive driving techniques. And again, there is a no county match for that particular program, and I'll include that in the, make sure that the clerk has those documents for the board.
Any questions, commissioners? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And we move now to item 4.26 from tax administration, tax collector's annual settlement and order authorizing collection of fiscal year '22, '23 taxes. Happy to have David Thrift with us for that item.
Good evening. So North Carolina General Statute 105373 calls for the annual settlement for the tax collector. I prepared a list of delinquent 2021 taxes on real property and delinquent 2021 taxes on personal property as of June 30th, 2022. Summary of those balances for municipalities and county are provided to you. Real property outstanding amounts to $1,654,635. Personal property bills outstanding of $453,610 for a total of $2,108,245. As I said, these lists will be available for review in the county manager's office. Before you, you have the summary of those outstanding balances. Also from General Statute 105373, I'm providing a list of tax bills on personal property that have been deemed to be uncollectible. We do that every year for accounts that we don't have the ability to take action on. So what we'll ask is for you to place those on a list that we call the insolvent's list that allows us after three years to be able to write those taxes off. Those are our bills with taxpayers, either companies that don't exist or taxpayers that are deceased that we can't collect from. Also have a list of minimal refunds that we've collected that were less than $15. So you remember last year, you approved a resolution that we would not automatically send a refund to anyone that had an overpayment less than $15. So we have a list of about 170 of those actions that have occurred, about $940. We are now analyzing that list, and anyone that has an existing account for 2022 will apply those funds to those tax balances. The rest, if we cannot identify somewhere to apply those, will be sent to the state for unclaimed funds.
That's where all these escheat funds come from.
That is correct, sir.
All the time. Questions for Mr. Thrift?
One further item, also the General Statute 105321 then provides for you the order to collect next year's tax receipt. So in your paperwork, I provided the levy for FY '22, real and personal property taxes, which at this point totaled $322,5459. And would ask that you accept the collection statement as provided and also approve the order to collect in accordance with 105321. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for David? You did a good job. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is approval of the regular meeting agenda. You all have a copy of that before you. I am not aware of changes we have made that would edit that. And if there are none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda for the July 18th, 2022 regular meeting as presented and schedule the public hearing for 6:30 or as soon thereafter as persons may be heard. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. We do have need of a closed session. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into.
Before we go into, can I make?
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to give you guys a heads up that the conference is in August, 11th through the 13th. Is that right? So we are currently working on the sessions. Just remember, we are going to register all of you. So there's going to be plenty of events, plenty of educational opportunities. And just remember, you guys are going to be hosting the other 99 counties. So they're excited about coming. The association's excited about coming, and just wanted to make sure you're aware. And we'll get that schedule out to you as quickly as possible, as soon as we get some hard dates and times on that so that you can make plans to attend. Then the other thing, I want to go back and talk a little bit more about the Health Alliance, and I left out a lot of stuff that they've done during this time. So they were the first ones to open up their emergency operating center. So we came down and sat in there with them. And that was for many days. And then we eventually moved back over to the large one over here. And I think that was, Steve may be watching at home and correct me when he gets back to work tomorrow, but I believe that is the longest continuous emergency operation that we've done in the operating center over there. So they were working clinics up in there, building up there through all of this. In addition to the response, they were working their community clinics, again, community education. When the governor or the local authorities were passing referendums and that kind of thing, they were the ones interpreting those referendums and answering those questions. And I'm not sure how many hours a day they were doing it, but they were doing it, and they were doing it well. And sometimes they were getting criticized for answering the questions, but that's what they do. Again, they also were the ones that were holding the weekly meetings for elected officials to come in and gain their information, as well as county managers, or city and county managers, to get the latest and greatest statistics locally and regionally and statewide and nationally so that we could form our plans as well. They were also, again, not only the general public, but the businesses when the mask mandates were going out and trying to figure out, does it apply to them? Does it not apply to them? So they were constantly on the phone, doing that. And so they were sort of the official interpreters of the governor's orders and of the president's orders throughout this whole thing. So in addition, they were doing their own, just like our employees, they were doing their regular jobs. But the pressure that was on them as the lead health agency was tough, and they survived it. So I didn't want it to go unsaid publicly because I think I left out, we moved through that pretty quickly. But again, I wanted to appreciate you guys for supporting that recommendation to provide them some additional incentive money because they worked hard. And it wasn't always, it wasn't always the news that people wanted to hear, but they stuck to their guns and they gave the facts and the statistics. And then that allowed everybody else to make their own interpretations and do what they thought was best for themselves personally and their families. But they were there and right at the front line, just like most of our people were. So I wanted to make sure I added that because we didn't get into that much detail.
Well, and so if my memory is correct, when it first started, we had an interim director. So they were short-staffed.
They were.
Right when it hit. If I remember that correctly.
Yeah, they were in between directors, and Erin Schu was thrown into that position, and all eyes were on her. And she did a fantastic job, as well as her other managers up there.
And you said they survived it, and they did. But they not only survived it, they thrived.
Yes, they sure did.
So that says a lot again. I'm with you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session as authorized by North Carolina General Statute 143-318, point 11A and 3, to discuss pending litigation. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. Okay, we are now in closed session. So thank you to all of the folks that joined us on television tonight, and we will see you in two weeks.